The final approval at the last meeting. We are, yeah, since we can also be in for a final by our approval. The apartment complex in Maxwell will be also at the same stage. Yes.
Just Matthew. So you can just on the same change. That's free to leave the main. There's one that's inside the layer. There's more than here. This, okay. Like we had a condition I think not there. We had a suggestion that it was that tree.
Yeah, I'm still here.
You're not there. You had a suggestion on the vector.
Okay.
Trees and roots and that's all we discussed there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of yes, so as you have found. The most possible within the year. Okay. Okay, good. Sure. Yeah, I can check the site. I'm sure. Um, so yeah, trucking depot. Uh, just out of my understanding here. And there is an action going on there. So what's working on redoing their fence? That was pretty much now my situation. They're working on their fence and on their parking edition. So I had some discussions with them. Uh, for now, no site plan application required for what they're doing. And we figured that there was just like, like I said, parking and fencing. Uh, they are working on a potential site plan for renovation or something. But for now, they're not. But we have a life commitment. Same thing for the old ranch building. Uh, so I met on site with the contractor there. And they are doing some demolition. Really, my heart, what they're doing is they're just cleaning everything.
Yeah.
They're not demolishing any structure or anything. They're basically just cleaning the place for now. So no applications required for that either. All right, even though they're still at very early stage of site recreation. And I have here, I was asking at the last meeting for the communication powers. So the Tidel power here that was moved from open building to Tidel forty-five. That one is, is live, it's completed and it's live. The one from Explorer Net on Pinet Road. When he's from the township. This one was also constructed and it went live on May seventeenth. And the three towers that Roger were putting up in Maxwell, we didn't feel from Robertson. And they did not start yet. Their plan is that they go to the perfect road. And going live before she said, I did it before March twenty-fourth. That's it. That's what they are doing here. And.
What's happening?
Well, all right. Uh, by the force, so we have a lot of complaints, of course. Uh, but when it's appropriate with protein, everything that has not changed. And I said, find either the dog. So I'm assuming most of you saw us in the community, the local figure of work. We are now trying to leave house or leave homes on some dogs. So with our dog pack that we have here. And we quickly realized that we were catching the dog. But a lot of times no one find the dog. So we were expecting that we would have a role in picking up the dog. But I guess dog, either they come from other townships or they're just abandoned. So if we're giving out, uh, Todd and the chemical department officer there. We put up some kind of a program where people can put in an application. And when a dog comes in and we got the grass test, there is breaking ice or whatever. But we will call these people to see if they're interested in purchasing the dog. So, uh, now we've admitted like two or three times and it's working really well now. So this is, this is what we kept good feedback on. Uh, planning. So subdivisions, um, we have a hard topic these days in the planning department. But you know, we do not have any open in the subdivision. So we did not for many years. Uh, when developers came to us asking questions about what we need, what we want for subdivision. We weren't really sure of what to tell them. So, so what we're doing now is we're working on a guideline standards for subdivisions. So when a developer comes in, you can just give him that book. And subdivision has to be asked for these standards. So most of the townships around have that already. So we're just, we're just taking the base off of theirs and changing it for our standards.
What?
Um, if you just a question, a question about the land that's beside the high school. Just north of the high school.
Yes.
Um, so obviously that must be planned for subdivision. Is that something that's already been planned prior to this council? Or is that something that will come to this council?
You mean this, the subdivision application, right? Subdivisions applications are, are all approved and applied for and can be let through. So, uh, there used to be an old subdivision approval for that property. It was removed from the property. Right now, what he's doing is simply just getting that through. So he's, he's starting, he's at very early stages of working with the developer to figure out like the, you know, like a concept plan. Once this, once this is done, probably, uh, he's bothered. At this time, we're gonna need for the campaigns for approval. And there's still a lot of work for servicing and whatnot. But there's no application yet for that property. But yeah, it's gonna be completed by.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with regards to the application for subdivision, you say it's through the campaigns. But I'm assuming we have some funding coming just from the state or not for football, but for comments?
Exactly, yeah. So it's, it's very similar to a severance application. So basically what happens is they apply at community level, but the township becomes a term. Uh, uh, consulting, that we do a program condition. So we, we, like it's in deposits, we want the, we can start or you can commission bill for servicing. It's done, but so yeah, we will get involved at very close numbers. The township is also in charge of hosting the meeting or like the public meeting. Because obviously I'll keep it moving again. So yeah, council and members of the public will be involved, of course. But yeah, the actual application and approval is. Not a common thing you can see. To become the new common thing you can see.
Okay.
Process, yeah. So yeah, we're working on that. And our guidelines and standards is gonna be done, uh, hopefully before the, the end of the year. So we're gonna, we're gonna see if they're, they have been with us. So of course, uh, public works is involved a lot because this is a fight. We're working on that. Uh, severance is at the level also they're behind, but they're, it's going good, it's better. So we should see some kind of community here to score information for this in the future. Uh, again, the rest is pretty much as a standstill. Uh, IHA, we are at.
With the, there's a second, second submission for their site plan. And we're not gonna issue our comments after that. So we're gonna, I think, we're speaking for that. They'll have a few, we're at a standstill pretty much and then ongoing applications. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. You can take it. Sorry, you got any questions or comments? I'm just gonna. Mr. Mayor.
Just on the IHA. So at what point then will it count out?
Um, when, when staff is satisfied that there's like kind of life with all their requirements. We're gonna bring it to council at our, same thing as we did for like one year. And we're gonna present with that planning, that's like, uh, we're meeting a plan. So see what meeting at council. That's not, that's just gonna be awesome. When?
Yeah.
Uh, whenever we flash, we, we're, we're. But yeah, so we're, we're gonna meet next week. The, the public works especially, the general issues that are in some of these. We're gonna figure out if they, because we got some kind of list of comments that were not, you know, without the standard. We needed this. So they submitted again and we're gonna review their comments and see what's. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, with regards to AHA, um, because it's gonna be a very complex, I'm assuming complex, uh, site plan agreement. We did talk, Sarah, remember you talked about, uh, the need to, um, you know, rather how it coming from us and you have to approve it, very necessary with the next meeting. Um, are you considering sort of like a presentation of the site plan? And then for us to be able to, um, show that we got the comments and then with your decision. Maybe you're, is that what you were talking about or?
Yeah, so through you and Sarah, we were discussing that. And it's, it's been held up obviously by Jacob's indication of how to find a site plan. And so I think you and I spoke to, I spoke to Jacob too, but I spoke to passion Jacob. But we want to give a one hour time clock to, you know, deal with that public meeting. Because of that, you want to make sure the plan is made right. So we don't want it to be that quick. Now, council can always call the wrong, uh, meetings. So we can have special meeting with council. I think it absolutely, um, warrants that. So again, with the timing, we'll, we'll have to do that. We can have special meeting with council where we do that and we'll have, my, I literally would have come as well, so.
Yeah, it, it doesn't have to be at the next group, next council meeting also. Your presentation on one, like, you know, six weeks after or a few months after that year.
Yeah, so thank you. I, I appreciate that. It seems to be a project and it seems to be a consideration and a, 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 a. Approve something that's, I think. Right discussion, yes.
If you have any questions or comments, seeing none, I wasn't there with the motion. Motion is great, I do. Okay, moving on to, uh, community services, apartment department over time. It's September twenty-one, council vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I'm still saying the council mail with the community number one, six, four, two, twenty-one dash eleven. The departmental work plan update September twenty-one. With the community services department for recreational purposes only.
Okay, councilor, welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so you will see in the three minutes' duration that we've already met with the township's pressure to quantify our, our capital budgets in two thousand twenty-two. We do expect that they will be able to tweak it. And you will know that we do speak to the municipal recreation associations budget, capital budget. Uh, there will be a carryover of funds from the two thousand twenty-one budget to the two thousand twenty-two budget on top of the regular class. And that's because they committed funds to these projects. But as you know, it's been very difficult sometimes to contractors or materials. But those plans have been committed. But you'll see that reflected in two thousand twenty-two budget process. In respect to the business and community awards gala, we're gonna be bringing them back also to council during the legislative process. We proposed to hold it as we used to do in the past, this September two thousand twenty-two. Regarding COVID, we've been keeping up to date with all the information changes that have been proposed by the province and Eastern Internal Health Unit. Um, all of our facilities are open right now, other than the Lander Sports Palace because it's under renovations. Even though the new and public still may open at this time. There had, we had a lot of challenges, um, trying to get clarifications from the ministry regarding who is required to show proof of vaccination. So for example, if you are the, an individual twelve years to seventeen years age, you are participating in order on sport. You are not required to show proof of vaccination. But if the parent for that child walks in with a thirteen-year-old family expecting, that thirteen-year-old is required to show proof of vaccination. So it causes all types of levels of complexity. And due to that, we, um, have hired a security firm to manage this. We've seen experience happen in community events, such as, for some of the patrons who were very literarily aggressive with staff who denied entry because they weren't able to show the vaccination. So we were able to hire practitioners and they're out of corner. We have posted in the Maxwell facility as well as at the town's joint. Now, there may be some moments where we're not able to get staffing because all of the municipalities have hired a security guard at this point. So they're really trying to spread across. You're going to pinch him. There's times I might be sitting there taking out, you know, doing COVID screening and other staff, minister of staff, and stuff like that. So that's how we've been able to manage this for now. We have them on hire until the nineteenth of October. And we've asked Eastern Internal Health Unit to put some pressure on the province to try to relieve some of these conditions. Because not only is it very difficult to manage, but it's also very costly to do so. So I was actually a focus for the community directors and it's happened to find that we were finding we're changing our fees. And my feeling for that and it was council's decision. But it's almost unfair to ask these costs along to the user who is in no way responsible for these new conditions. So we're hoping that by the nineteenth of October, we have a little clearer on this file and we'll be able to be canceled. Such as these children's health units vaccination clinics, the last clinic preferred in our facilities, the Delfin Sports House on the twentieth of August. Now they are a uniform spot for them, as you see in the body to schools and to the events. We are presently taking some of the equipment from the Lander Sports House. And this is in the rights to our ICIP grant that we received for the reverse shoot one to Lander Sports House. So. So what to do, says, you know, we want to reuse the board, recycle with purpose as much as possible. This equipment, our, our goal is not for it to end us in the line of. So what we proposed, and I put two examples in this report, and I'll speak to the glass. Uh, we've actually sent him out an email to the other recreation associations, the municipalities, offering them some of the glass. We spoke to the glass distributor, asking if they would buy it back from us. But they don't want to purchase glass that's already been installed. It's a question of liability on their head. But that doesn't mean that we can't give this glass away to another arena that may be able to use it. So we took an inventory of all of the sizes and numbers and we operated up to the different associations. So, um.
Right, I can just jump in, councilor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And can we not, uh, like, because we have, we were starting, maybe like outside of Red Ear and Maxville or even the, the one in General Robinson. I think personally we should keep that inventory. Like we have a large facility at Molding, we can store it there and maybe keep it for our own.
You really don't want to take it home?
Yeah, I always wanted a greenhouse like that. You know, but I'm sure our own recreation and our own like, like, yeah, they, they, they don't do like boats and stuff like that. I'm sure we demand.
So we're actually really pleased to report that, uh, if you recall at another committee at home, we had indicated that Ducky was going to be obtaining some of the vinyl boards. Unfortunately, the metal vacuum was welded in place with wall extensions and can't take those apart. But all of the vinyl plants will be repurposed. You can't really put the type of tempered glass that we have inside the arena outside for this, at this time. That's why we're proposing that goes in your facilities. And if you know, most of the other projects don't have tempered glass, they have netting. So we are, um, giving about half of the boards to Ducky and the other boards are being kept at the Alexander Road. So we're futureing this by the municipality. Another example is the spectators scene. We've already had a request for some of the seats and they could be installed on, uh, you know, somewhat instructors. And they could offer seating around baseball diamond or other places. So we're going to be offering those to municipal recreation associations in our area. And any surplus will be disposed of to, um, I got the, this is the. So we're really trying to ensure that nothing comes up in the line of. And we find that this is really well aligned with, like I said, yes, it owns all of the energy efficiency, so on and so forth. So I think this is a great market that we're going to be able to report on. So we are continuing to work with VVA on our different fixtures and amenities. And we have involved council Madden in this process. So we've seen the equipment emails that keep coming back. And I was jokingly mentioning to, um, council Madden that I was expecting to receive an Excel sheet that I could tick off yes, no, maybe, or something like that. But it seems to be an email after another one, by the way, we're thinking about this, what are your thoughts? So, uh, it's been a, a bit of a longer process. They've also had challenges with identifying different effects, the materials that are suitable for our facility. They seem to want to propose very high-end equipment for the facility. So the shower, um, not the nozzles that they were performing were about eight hundred dollars a piece. And we said, oh, I do think that'd be a delta commercial, but work really fine in our facility. So we've brought these expectations more in line with the, the budget for the project. So there's been a lot of going back and forth. There has been one issue that's been identified so far. And that has to do with some of the existing sanitary and vent piping in the facility. And we will find that at the bottom of page eleven. And the cost that they have quoted us for this springing up code, and it will have to be brought up code, is roughly forty thousand dollars for the new piping and five thousand dollars of demolition. And they say this is a plus or minus on the high end of twenty-five percent of the budget. But notwithstanding that, that's another reason why they're watching the cost in such as, you know, toilet fixtures that are going in. Because we know that when you have construction project, there are always surprises. So that's the update for VVA. In respect to grant applications, we were able to finalize the transfer payment agreement and actually define extra part to care that for us. And that is for the ICIP grant that was done prior to the announcement of the federal election. We are waiting to hear back on the seniors community grant program. And that was the purchasing of the lawn holding equipment up into Hortonstone. So we're usually, we hear back early fall. So, um, I would expect an email between now and November, hopefully. And we also submitted, uh, grant application to the federal community revitalization grant for the skate park. Now, as you know, with the dropping of the writ, all of these programs were paused. Now that the election is over, we're hoping to hear back that this program, intake of this program is going to continue. So, um, we should get enough in on that over the next few weeks. In regards to health and safety meetings, we're pleased to report that we continue to do these monthly. And it's been a really good way to capture, um, issues that, um, may have been delayed in the past. But we need, uh, in the different facilities, it also gives the facility operator another set of eyes to be able to walk through the facility. And we get used to our own facilities and it's easy to not see something. So when we meet in the different facilities, we're able to have a good walkthrough and be able to identify anything that needs to be fixed and do it in a very timely fashion. In regards to staffing, we've been staffing all of the facilities according to the needs. As you know, to work this dome is back over a good time, the ISIS in Maxwell, so the complement of staff is there to respond to the needs of this building. Um, regarding community and working activities, I won't, uh, speak too much on that. Because I'm sure the chairs of work committees will be pleased to report on the activities. But just to let you know that we could be adding the Lander Rooms of Community Improvement Plan. So we're waiting on comments from the public on that, so please. If anyone has any comments regarding the one proposed change to the community plan, or if there's something else that they would like to see in that. Where the status present, we're calling you that information to be brought back to the Arts and Culture and the H committee early in October. So we look forward to seeing those comments. And the community development committee, we've been updating, uh, the members on all of the development market strategy action items as we go. And we're pleased to report that we've had a lot of interest regarding development, as you mentioned earlier. And we've been meeting on site with developers, we've been corresponding in a very, very timely fashion, getting back to them with any questions that they might have. And also organizing meetings between staff to see how we can best respond to those concerns. In respect to events and activities, the Canada Day video is around two thousand, uh, views. We're looking at organizing a fall, like a football session. We were really pleased, um, to host the Lander Minor Baseball Association at Lander Sports Palace. Um, baseball diamond there, even though the season was shortened. So at least, um, the, the participants in that sport had the opportunity to practice for about eight weeks. Soccer started on the seventh of July, it's now finished up. Uh, other than, I think, one of the leagues is still, um, hosting some outdoor activities. But we know that we'll be moving it towards making around November. And we'll be pleased to report on that when it does occur. The summer camp started on the fifth of July and ended on the twenty-seventh. That was a huge success. We had twenty-nine individuals registered to this other camp for full weeks. We're looking at ways that we can expand the summer camp in the future. We're hoping that with possibly the lifting of some of the COVID requirements next year, we'll be able to have more individuals present as part of that whole event. The women's volleyball is starting up again in November. Yoga has started up at Lander Sports Palace. And Youth Unlimited also hosted a summer camp. It was a half-day summer camp at the Maxwell District Sports Complex. And they again, uh, told us that they very much appreciated the facility. And we're going to be working with them to hope that we have next year. The public program scheduled for the fall and winter is attached to this report. Uh, we tried to extend the public skating, shimmying, parents of tots and senior skates at the Maxwell District Sports Complex. We were waiting to hear back from another school on if they were going to be taking some of the ice time. We have not quite heard back, but we have to understand the hesitancy because just as we, due to the regulations that have been announced by the province. We lost four hours of program. And these are groups that told us that they, with the new COVID requirements of showing proof of vaccination, they just can't meet those requirements with their participants. So they had to cancel. So we're trying to place this ice with other user groups right now. But we even had an indication when for minor hockey, um, that they're able to manage the hours that they have because they also have lost some of their participants. So that's a, a little bit of negative news on that respect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with regards to the public skating, we received that letter from a conservative citizen saying that the, by the time kids get off the bus and in, in trying to get to the public skating, the, the time is almost over.
So and most of the time, uh, the, the group that they were addressing, I think, they come to the shimmy hockey. And that's the reason we put shimmy hockey at the latest time, so from four to five fifteen and three thirty to five o'clock. So it gives them time to get to the facility. And we also, with those holes that we have now with the schedule, if we're not able to fill them up, we will definitely offer enough for public skating. And we'll make sure that more shimmy hockey, we will make sure that it's advertised from the township Facebook page.
Um, yeah, I think they were referring to the public skate actually, which is, it's very early, it's from two thirty to four. And, uh, kids are still at school.
So they were showing the high school kids. And from our experience, the high school kids, we should encourage shimmy hockey. So, but we can definitely adjust as they.
No, this letter was from a one of the younger children, they're now in elementary school.
Okay. So I'll take a look at that and see if we can switch some of the skating around. But there will be more public skating than what's on the program now.
Oh, okay.
Because just this week, um, we, as I mentioned, we're hours of ice and trampolines. Actually, currently she does run the high school.
Oh, she does? Okay. Do you know what she was referring to? Whether it's.
Yeah, I also, I think we're with the public skating, but, but Wednesday, three to five, it would, would fit perfectly for me.
Sorry.
The word, yeah, we're going to school here and we can do this.
Do you want to, right, you can ask that.
Yeah, right, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you will know all kinds of different activities that are currently happening at Lander Sports Palace, Island Park. Um, you have the results of the water analysis. Uh, you will note that beach was closed quite a bit this summer, unfortunately, due to, uh, the extreme heat. And we were not alone, a lot of, we just, um, had issues with high bacteria counts. And one of the new conditions now is that of the five samples that are taken, not one of them can surpass a four hundred in the colic. So the past was the median average that they were taking. Now, if one sample surpasses, even if your other samples are under a hundred, you are, you are basically told to, uh, no swimming advisory. Because you will know that we have council one hundred ninety-four and a hundred and nine, a hundred and nine there. Of activity at the Maxwell District Sports Complex, putting in the ice lines, back, back in the system, we started early, we started on the twenty-seventh.
Sorry, just jumping, if we could go back to the, on, sort of, is there, is, what, what in your mind is the reason for, for that? Besides that you knew that there was, you know, those.
So what, what we found in the past, our past experiences, what usually happens is that we get a period of extreme, extreme heat. And then we get a very, very sudden downpour. And all the shore, everything that's on shore ends up going into no problem. So it causes high bacteria counts. And that's the same thing we see on the sea north, it's the same thing with something that are before, unfortunately. This year has been exceptional. I, I'm starting on this year, I've never seen this many beach visors. Usually have one, maybe two a summer, but never any more than this.
Well, there's, there's really nothing that we can do to mitigate that.
No, and we've had discussions, uh, we know that the geese do stay on the beach area, but they take samples all along the shoreline. So then staff is directed not to push any excrements into the water, that defeats the purpose. So they're actually picking up the excrements and carting them away. So we're doing our. So we're doing our best to ensure that the shoreline is kept as clean as possible with this bacteria infection. The good news is we have a beautiful splash pad and that was so highly used this year. That's all we were indicating individuals coming. And you could come here at nine o'clock at night and we would have people using the splash pad. So we make sure we get open. As a matter of fact, we've been expecting very warm temperatures this weekend. We let the splash pad open specifically for that purpose to ensure someone with an individual that don't have their condition in those.
Just back to the arenas. I don't know if anyone saw CTP news. It was a community service of Ottawa. And they closed their arena for two years for renovations. They mentioned that the average life for an arena is forty years. However, they were able to get sixty years out of their arena. They spent two years investing in improvements so that they'll have their arena for the next sixty years. So I'm glad that we're investing in quality for our arenas so that hopefully we can enjoy another sixty years for our group. So I appreciate the work that you're doing with that arena project. Thank you.
Just back to Island Park and the washrooms. You just remember, yeah. Requesting that washroom still open earlier and the senior room still open later.
So we usually open the bathrooms as of the Victorian intent and we only close the bathrooms after the festival. So the individual who ever in this seem to think that the bathrooms close at September or not, they're always open and at least until I say.
Okay, and in the spring?
In the spring, they usually open up in May. And if we do have soccer that starts earlier than that, we do have an alcove of course, a bathroom that's installed inside. It's also a little bit.
And did you relay that information to anyone?
So they came through council or I think it was Nina that was sent back. So I didn't send Nina.
Let's see if that's satisfactory.
Perfect.
He's a troublemaker anyway.
So continue.
We're pleased to report that we were granted fifty million dollars to Kids Canada for purchasing these in the first of January Park. Due to the timing of the grant, we formally gave it up in the spring. That is a wonderful idea for Maxwell. We have been maintaining soccer fields in the summer and we're doing some winter maintenance now at this point. We also hope the Senate tab. So as you know, there was an emergency Senate tab. Staff took care of cleaning that off as best as we could on Friday. Unfortunately, there was still some debris left. They went back and cleaned it again. We actually have Senate tab because once we cleaned some areas of the Senate tab, we had a bright base to the Senate tab where the battle was had occurred. And the rest of the Senate tab was darkened dingy. So we're doing that exercise right now. And we've been working with the nation on putting signage at that corner because there is no signage. So we're going to be assigning work to it at Island Park, indicating that the Senate tab, the nation has approved the design. So it's a standard design that we have shared with township. It's also at our community office. And we've been working on doing area, putting in some top dressings this season. So all of this work is ongoing. And we did perform a visit at all of the other Senate tabs throughout the township and they're all being given some tender loving care at this point. And I think, other than that, just the other thing we already mentioned, we've kept up with all of our training. We participated in so supervisor from village sports and this was really interesting. It was by industry or labor individual speak to what exactly they look for when they come into inspections and what happens when there's an incident. So it was very eye-opening, yeah. And that was organized by the local department. So a couple of works of work. So we was really appreciative. Other economic activities, as mentioned, we, we, the property owners, we share information through the Maxwell not exam room chambers. And we also keep, are working on a series of videos through, alongside with the United Counties on some of the restaurants in this town. So that's all that has been working on. And various ads for newspapers and website updates continually as well as social media updates. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, man. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, oh, yeah, go ahead. Come to me.
Just, I sent this to you on email, but thank you for the attention. We have some citizens who will be here.
All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Moving on to the Treasury Department. Twenty twenty-one, Counselor Man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm myself, seconded by Counselor Matt. The committee of the whole receives report TR twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight. Departmental work plan updates September twenty twenty-one from the Treasury Department for information. This is where we catch up all the time. Go ahead, Treasury.
Basically, the building assessment sites were completed. The consultant Ray Young was putting together the draft copies of the building assessments. They're coming in with work site by site. It is draft form only. They're still expected to be done by December. Task collection continues to be good with problem properties that are making arrangements or paying substantial amounts on their arrears. At the end of July, we started a registration process and fourteen properties of the fourteen were down to five because people had brought themselves out of registration status or paid in full. Those who have paid in full, we are encouraging to go on pre-opera, but it makes life a lot easier for them and for us. But the nine properties that were taken off the registration, on those nine, we collected just over sixty-eight thousand. So that was substantial. I did some comparison work. It's not hard to report, but just to give you an idea, the arrears from September twenty-first, twenty twenty in comparison to September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, we've been reduced our arrears by almost a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So the collection process is, is coming along really well. Infrastric for Ontario loan, the new company that's coming to council on September twenty-seventh for the timeline documentation. It might be a little early because apparently the fire truck has been delayed, but everything's in line and that the lawyer, so it's going to be coming to council on September twenty-seventh. But twenty twenty-two is underway. The goal is to move to October version and operate on the fifteenth. However, I'm still waiting for some information around like OMPF grant. We don't know what the twenty twenty-two allocation is. I still need some confirmation on insurance rates, need confirmation on benefit rating basis. So those are still coming, but it's early in the process. What we've been told today is the assessment roll will not be delivered until December fourteenth. So that's pretty hard to come up with a tax rate for early January. The hopes are that the paper documentation coming on December fourteenth is paper. And hopefully we'll have electronic some data earlier than that. Because the goal is to get the budget to council as early as possible in January. And that's all we've done.
Just a question. I know we increased the amount. What is our total arrears at this point?
Six hundred and, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-four.
That, that's all that our arrears can, compared to two point some million if you.
Yeah, it's been coming down. I mean, I think five years ago, it was, we've come down, I think in three years, we've come down eight percent. So, I mean, we're putting strong message out there and it's actually quite funny when you have people calling saying, I promise I'm going to pay my taxes. Don't take my house. And like, they're not even in registration status, but thank you for caring. So it's, it's, it's been good. I mean, it's not a pleasant job, but it has to be done.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the fire department. Open air burn by law. Counselor. Seconded by myself, seconded by Counselor Lancing. The committee of all recommends counsel, county attorney, and jury. Thank you. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report before helped raise the opening of the law. So just to give a little bit of background, the purpose of open air burn by law is to institute requirements, basically, the opening of the law basically establishes timeline which should be set as well as requirements and restrictions that are established basically to prevent potential risk of spreading the fires, including issuance of total fire rating. It's also important that it outlines health safety and opening of persons in property. Since the adoption of the current bylaw for the two thousand nineteen, the fire department conducted a nonviolent review of the effectiveness and the restrictions in overall purpose of the bylaw. Overall, the fire grounds review indicated each number of incidents and overall compliance with residents. The Glengarry Federation of Agriculture, the Soff and the CML, men and mill in Maine, point from one, discuss the term of open bylaw. GFA presented many points of discussion for and against the current bylaw to offer a new difference as. The agricultural burning season from October fifteenth to November fifteenth timeline of the bylaw. During this time period, noticed and issued numerous permits and resulted in complaints or incidents. The fire department is currently proposing a new opening of bylaw, which whereas section five point three of the bylaw would then reach shall not be permitted to burn between June first and October fifteenth. So this will change from the current status of November first. Some of the reviews that we've taken up in terms of the analysis of the current bylaws was, we do like at the amount of burn permits that were issued throughout the agricultural community, which throughout the years we've actually analyzed and seen in overall, there hasn't been any decrease over the years. In twenty eighteen, we issued ninety-two permits and, sorry, in twenty nineteen, ninety permits, two thousand nineteen, a hundred and thirteen. And twenty twenty, which we had a hundred and thirteen as well. Twenty twenty-one, we've issued so far, this month, we have sixty. These numbers are always fluctuating given the length of time that goes on and so forth. So you'll see fluctuations, but overall it has been a decrease in our funds. We also took our turn in twenty twenty-two using many sites that we've burned at the top of it. And it seemed very effective. What I mean by effective is that when you're really burning, you're burning very effectively, causing very little nuisance to the residents to a community. So this is why we're seeing a significant amount of increase in the complaints from our residents. Overall, these changes proposed, changes just in the volume of last year and twenty twenty, which is making the bylaw more efficient moving forward for two weeks.
Okay, thank you. It's time I'll just double out. GFA president, O'Furtis, and make a few comments if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I got a chance to speak with members of the last couple of years here. I raised a question. We never read a few of our comments here this afternoon. We all know that there was an opportunity we missed. We all put the opening of this bylaw as first discussed. By far the most challenging harvest season based within a generation. While you guys are discussing this bylaw, our members, our farmers, they're dealing with the orange charge or who else is trying to pay the orange charge that left from in the lurch trying to dry crops with, that were already commissioned, balding due to another frost. All that to say, our mind wasn't here when this bylaw was discussed in twenty nineteen. I think most of all of you agree that there was a lack of fire ring in this bylaw with twenty nineteen. Had proper consultations, and I'm not saying that the process wasn't followed, but had there been adequate consultations with the farming community, I think we would have found that there was an appetite to find a solution that dealt with the concerns of the maintenance residents and the air of old concerns and so on and so forth. We will also respect it and work with the farming community to allow for longer period of burning over the course of the year. We've put through, we put forward a session that we feel addresses a lot of all the concerns raised by the public. What we're asking for here today is an opportunity to keep those conversations moving forward. We're very grateful for the extra two weeks that are being considered here this afternoon. But we'd like to keep that conversation moving, of course, in winter and try and find equitable approach. Although, of course, the winter into next year, we would allow for more burning opportunities for our members. I thought to remember to me this morning that certain scenarios where you don't build this bylaw fits and is overbearing. I'm talking about instances where properties are far removed from residential areas, but burn piles are backhand properties. There's logistical issues of the burn piles through the months of December, January, February, March, through the snow cover in the areas. If there's a mechanism in place that allowed for exemptions to be made so that staff can take away the properties when it is by case situation and approve certain instances where the concern and threat to public safety, public health is low. I think that would go a long way to repair the damage for lack of better term between municipality and the community right now. So that's one thing that I'd like to put forward. I understand the staff's concerns and the actual workload. I point to self glary. We have a much more comprehensive approach targeting forces in self glary that works and allows us to keep burning around. I've been told today that you don't like to make comparisons to self glary because you feel that it's two different situations. And there's more challenging scenarios in self glary. How do you spring that? When you look at the, the area, the area of the South of the area right now, where areas around Walter, we're up against other, and we might try to create a more challenging situation within the South of the glary. We are finding it is to balance, balance the need of the farmers with the interest of the community. So lots to think about. We look forward to continuing this conversation, of course, in winter. If you do have, at this point in time, to keep those conversations moving. It is serious. I've got the session that we put forward back in January, July entirely. When I was tried to council, I think that would go a long way to restore the trust between the municipality.
Comments? Counselor Noble, did you have comments? Do you mind?
That, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wondered, when I was doing a bit of research background, what, what other people do and what other people suggest in different municipalities, I ran into a few between Oklahoma, Nova Scotia, Saskatchewan, that waved the fee. Which was something that, those three in particular, but a few other ones that I just recommended. So they just were trying to encourage that. Obviously vegetation is either super moist because, I mean, it's Christmas, we all went for our walk with no shoes on. Or it's covered in the snow and it would obviously not catch fire. So that was just an idea that I had. I don't, the fee is not part of it. It's something else to, to not punish anybody, I guess. To burn in what we would consider the safest time of year. Just an idea.
Thank you. Do you want to respond to that?
As soon as we look at that and look at the fees, the kind of what council would like to oppose. In terms of traditional schemes, we haven't gone.
like to oppose, in terms of their additional schemes, whether it's on the provinces in the sense, but we certainly looked at other municipalities in the area. Very similar in the sense of fees, very different structures based on municipalities and just how the structure, municipality, and how it's certainly different, based on building stock, it's older than how municipalities are placed throughout, of course, the farming community, so certainly that aspect of it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments, they're in their ways.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to comment on Mr. Ferguson's request that the council agree to stay at the table and keep the conversation going. I really want to speak for myself, but I can't imagine that council members would disagree that this is a good idea to, just to keep the lines of communication open and keep conversation going. I know that our CAO and our party have been gathering information, will continue to gather information and data relating to, you know, when the agricultural burns that happened in the past, and exactly to the challenges or the opportunities related with past burns, so that we have all of the information in front of us, when the conversation continues, we can make more informed decisions. Thank you.
You got it, Mayor? Any further questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion? Departmental Work Plan Update 2021, Councilman?
Move by myself, seconded by the mayor, ladies. Committee of All Receives report that date 2021-11. The Departmental Work Plan Update, September 2021, from the Fire Services Department for information purposes only.
Thank you. Madam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report for councils, just to give the background on a few items from the Fire Service. In terms of communication, this guidance has been kind of us quite some time, but this is, this is probably a shortage of products that the communication board is facing in terms of moving through the phase group. And we're also reviewing and putting forward a dispatch of MRU, so the concept's in line for this year, in that case for that communication project, which will align the connection points from our towers to our component dispatch. In terms of fire departments, just give a overview of the coming developments that are currently approved and are active. Our protocol, not in the current period, brush fires, about 2015, active permits, but clearly we have 705 recreational permits. In terms of our COVID-19 updates, currently 90% of our members are currently vaccinated. All COVID-19 policies are still being in place, including, for instance, pandemic stations, we're opening the stations back up, a few of our members, the trainees, and we have, we also have the ability now to do rapid tests on members who are vaccinated, so even if you have an instance where the machine didn't get vaccinated, we can do a follow-up rapid test very quickly and we can get humans. This will also allow us to remain operational along the lines. In terms of training, our regular training remains ongoing. Training is taken as a training facility, following all our NPA standards, so the training facility is proving to be very active access for our members, allowing us to train to very high standards. Our foreign recruits are progressing well through, you know, their fire college, one of the fire fight force, which is 70 completely, the same first. We'll also be targeting recruitment again, I mean, for the new year. As well, we've moved to internal instructor for first aid CPR, this is in the management contract, this is in terms of, so friendship will be provided from instructor to other departments, even as well. Fire prevention, regarding prevention, I'm sure it's pretty busy to do follow inspections from incidents, as well as our regularly scheduled school visits and bomb law inspection. We continue to follow the Fire Services Office guidance in terms of bomb law offices in schools, which remains a strict inspection, but table talk exercises. Fleet, aerial testing, just recently completed on the outside vendor, the aerial pass inspection, there are items which are being addressed and repaired. So the new tanker that is, tanker three, remains currently in production with battleship. There have been numerous delays due vendors that supply battleship. Currently, it is sitting on the floor, we're still working on it, but there's a particular portion on the outside vendor, shaking here, it's a tanky, that they're behind, and that's due shortages of weapons out in the field, so they're not even actually have weapons complete backhand for us, so they're actually behind on unknown municipalities in terms of their deals as well, so they're not the only ones facing it, but they are giving us a weekly updates as to where, and at this time, as of today, we're seeing a little bit of action to recover. In terms of key agreements and bylaws, currently, we're in post of final draft, we're establishing regular fire permits, we can see many changes that are going to come forward to the council file within the next four months. We're going to leave with a guideline keeping for so long, just to be enough to just up the standard and make sure that the pipeline has broken to value. That concludes the conference, man?
Okay, chief, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I have a motion. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, Public Works Department, Departmental Work Plan Update, September 2021, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We brought ourselves, seconded by Councilor Man Massey, sorry, that the Committee of All Receives report PW 2021, 20, and the Departmental Work Plan Update, September 2021, the Public Works Department for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Tara is not physically here, she had an appointment today, but she is, should be able to speak. Tara, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I've unmuted. Are we good?
Can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear. Can you hear me? Can you hear me all right?
As good as it's going to get, unfortunately, Tara.
Pardon me?
Can you just give me like 30 seconds? I'm going to try one more thing.
Okay. Are we good?
Try again.
Can you hear me now? Are we good to go? Let me know when we're ready.
Can you hear me now, Tara?
I can hear you. I haven't had any problems hearing you, but can you guys hear me?
Go ahead, Tara.
Okay, perfect. So I'll start. So through you, Mayor McDonald, to council, I have the Public Works update for September 22nd, 2021, solid waste management. We had the rare household hazardous waste day, which was successful on August 14th, and the majority of what we received, or the highest percentage of product that we received, was oil. And then the Resource Productivity and Recovery Authority Registration Documentation for the Producer Responsibility for Recycling is due September 30th. You'll be receiving that at the September 27th council meeting, so next Monday night, and that's just the initial report. The actual transition report is not due until August of 2023. Landfill update, we have experienced a fair bit of dumping over the month of August and still into September at several different locations throughout the municipality, some of which are permanently owned, so it's a bit of an issue. We've looked into installing cameras at the one location, which is our water tower, to try and deter that, as well as making sure that the camera at the actual landfill, because at the time of the dumping event, it wasn't working, so we've rectified that. Next up, we have transportation services. So update for fleet, the AVL system, we're in transition right now from ACE to Geotab, so it's currently underway, and it should be fully functional in this fall. Road maintenance, staff have been working away still at potholes, which is ongoing throughout the year. They're working upgrading and general road maintenance, roadside grass cutting still ongoing, and it'll be wrapping up in the next couple of weeks. The roads need study is complete, you're also going to see that coming to council soon as a report, and the consultant will be presenting the outcome of that as well, and we'll have the 10-year capital plan updated, and that'll be the first council meeting coming up in October. Creek Bridge, as we know, or Creek Road Bridge, as we know, is complete, we're going to try and schedule the ribbon cutting now that the elections are done. Lock Gary Dam spillway replacement is underway, staff are working on this, and the funding was through the Raisin River Conservation 40. Sidewalk inspections, the report has been reviewed, staff are developing a multi-year program, we're a bit late this year to get any sidewalk replacement done, so we're going to be a bunch of time asking to carry forward that money, and just double up next year and do twice the work, so that we can get that done, because we're running out of, out of nice weather to get anybody hired for that. So as you'll notice, the defects have been painted up, some have been patched, just to bring awareness to pedestrians that are traveling. Parking lot, so the Ottawa Hotel Parking Lot is what staff call it, but I think it's also known as John, can't even remember the name, there's an individual that owns the parking lot, but we rent it, there is an agreement, so there was a slip and fall earlier this year. Staff did go in and took out the issue, which was an old foundation underneath the parking lot, and repaired or replaced that parking lot, so you'll see that it is in better shape. Pavement markings, symbols, parking stalls, crosswalks, accessibility markings, and the stop bars, there's only about 50% complete, we will try our best to get that done before we have not so great weather. Sign inventory and retroreflectivity study is complete, staff review that and have been coordinating the replacement of the failed or poor signs, to ensure we're within the minimum maintenance standards. Updates from environmental services for water, Maxwell Water is still at about approximately 80% complete for connections and inspections, and water billing did commence as of August. Alexandria Water reservoir replaced and minor reconfiguration of a section of pipe will be coordinated near La Heel Street and Dominion Street to accommodate future water main replacement via pipe bursting, which we originally tried to do in 2021, we didn't get any bids, so we have moved that work to 2022. A lot of the contractors that do this type of work were fully booked for this year, so it's been pushed off. Waste water, EBB Engineering still working on the Alexandria Waste Water Servicing Plan and has initiated collecting data for the wastewater hydraulic model. The deadline for the servicing plan is still December of 2021. However, the hydraulic model for the wastewater system for both Alexandria and Maxwell will not be complete until the March of 2022, and same with the calibration of the Alexandria and Maxwell's of our water system, that won't be complete until March of 2022. Alexandria, one of the sewage pumps required repair work in August, and it'll be, it's back in service now, actually. A sewer lateral was relined, that was successfully done on Main Street with minimal remediation. There was requirement to actually dig one hole, we were trying to avoid that, but there was an area that couldn't be lined, it had to actually be improved structurally. Maxwell, the team has contracted out grouting of four service laterals that were leaking, so that work will be happening soon. And then we have an update for stormwater and drains. So drain maintenance, the bids have been received and awarded, and the maintenance is scheduled as soon as the crops come off the field, so work will be starting sometime in October, hopefully, and wrap up in December. So the list of the 12 drains that are scheduled between October and December is listed there in the report, and then the additional five drains, that will be completed early of 2022, based on the contractor's availability. And that is the Public Works update. Thank you. Any questions?
Just a question, though, garbage, extra garbage pickup. I don't have that in mind before, can get an extra garbage pickup for large waste feed, or do some dumping that's happening right now?
So through you, Mayor McDonald, I couldn't hear the full question, but I think you're asking about the large pickup, is that correct? If it's with regards to the extra day for the large pickup, we are looking, okay, we're looking at, including that in the budget, oh, sorry, we're looking at including that in the budget for 2022, and we still haven't been able to pull together all the costing for that, so you'll see that come forward as part of the budget talks and a proposal for a program pilot for next year.
Perfect, thanks, Tara.
Tara, just wondering, also votes, the other, talked about the plan for speeds on our roads in North Glengarry, just wondering, sort of where that's at?
Sorry, so again, through you, Mayor McDonald, I'm not, I didn't actually catch that whole question, so I'm not sure, maybe Sarah, you can repeat the question to me?
Yeah, absolutely. So Councilor Manley was just wondering about the speeds, the study that we're going to do?
So I'm not exactly sure what you're asking specifically, so I know we have, we are looking to do a traffic count program that would also include speed information, and that is, again, coming forward as a budget ask, and will be a program that would be implemented in 2022 to capture the operating speeds of our roads throughout the municipality. I'm not sure if that answers the question.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Tara, sorry.
Thank you. No, I'm so sorry, I feel, I feel badly that I can't, I can't hear well from that side, I can hear you, Sarah, well, I just, everything else is a bit garbled.
Tara, if you can hear me, sidewalks in Alexandria that got marked painted up, we had some feedback, I'll call it. I also mentioned to you, there may be a grinder for walk implement that we still have in our fleet, I'm wondering if we can, if on this fall, or even in the spring, whenever we have some time to, if we can put this grinder to use and clean up some of what has been marked up, and actually, before replacement, actually, doctor these to make them acceptable. and actually before replacement, actually doctor needs to make them acceptable.
Sarah, can you repeat the question?
Sorry, yes, so Counselor, there's a movie like this, right?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. So Counselor Madden was asking for the sidewalks that were marked up by the Public Works Department, if there is an implement for the sidewalk cleaner. The older one, whether there's a grinder that's an attachment to it that we could use to perhaps repair some of the sidewalks that can't be fully re, you know, reinstated. Because I know that I did see as you walk around, there is quite a few sidewalks marked up that are a hazard.
Yes, so through you, Mayor McDonald, the answer to that question is we are looking into options for renting a grinder to be able to improve some of those situations where there are trip hazards. The paint is only an interim kind of, you know, notice there's a hazard here. And we are looking into options for, for renting. I know, I haven't looked into recently the, an implement for our sidewalk machine to do that. However, I know there is the option of renting and I've done that in other municipalities to rent the grinder to come in and fix those locations. So that is something that we are all, it's already on our task list.
Did your question come through?
Tara, hi, I just wondered. The parking lot, sorry, I didn't have a blink to remember my question. The parking lot that we're renting, the John Hope Building, the Ottawa Hotel, did we incur a hundred percent of that repair?
Yeah, so through you, Mayor McDonald, with respect to the John Hope slash Ottawa Hotel Parking Lot, the agreement that is due to be updated does note that we, as the township, are responsible, because we have a rental agreement for that parking lot. We are responsible for all maintenance and repairs to that parking lot. So yes, we did incur that cost at a hundred percent.
Counselor Massey.
Just regarding the markings on our sidewalk, I think for the first time, I think this council see the scope of the work that we need to be done on the sidewalk. We've been nearing the sidewalks before what's coming with last and new painter. Now we see the major flaws we have, so I think we need to put that aside.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Tara, can, can we please schedule a roads tour for council that can go in conjunction with the, that can go in conjunction with the roads need study that will be presented in October?
Yeah, so through you, Mayor McDonald, to Deputy Mayor Williams. Yeah, for sure, we can schedule a roads tour. Would you like that to happen after the presentation of the roads need study?
Yes.
Okay, everyone's, you can't, you can't see it. Everyone's nodding their head. Yes.
Okay. Well, I can't see, it's very small on my screen because you're on my phone, so.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I have a motion. All those in favor of the motion? Question is carried. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are going on quickly to matters arising from standing committees. Major Region Conservation Authority, Councilor Massey.
Yes, we, we, we submitted a grant for whatever is concerned, you know, for the Lockery Dam work, the Kennedy Dam work, wherever the version I think is set. Apart from that, we have numerous grant applications, but and then we're talking of reopening the Raising River Office in Conwell back up to fully to the public. Right now it's still open, but you need an appointment. Anyway, apart from that, that's pretty much good.
Thank you. Maxwell Manor, right, Councilor Massey?
Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow night, so we did the thing we would report since the last one.
Thank you. Glengarry, Glengarry Pioneer Museum, Councilor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of notes and then we're doing just an email that's just coming from them. So Fall Festival happened a couple of weeks ago now. Yeah, no, I mean, it was a pared down event, but hey, I just got something I have to go to. And then coming up this weekend, right after you go to the mini trade show in Dunkie, the War Meeting Twelve is taking place. And so it's a reenactment. It's a treasure for all ages. Blacksmith will be working at the forge and tin smith peddling his wares. And of course, reenactors living as it may have been in the eighteen hundreds cooking over open fire, spinning wool and soldiers preparing for battle. So there will be a smaller battle, but it will be living history. It's also be interesting. And that'll be ten to four on both Saturday and Sunday. And then special price for everyone is five dollars. The museum, museums are not required to provide proof or require. Museum visitors, I should say, are not required to provide proof of vaccination, but the majority of the event will be outside. You'll just have to wear masks and go into the building or in an area where physical distancing cannot be maintained. And that's it.
Thank you.
Glengarry Archives update, I was unable to attend that meeting, so I'll ask Councilor Massey to give a report. We just had a demand for like a hurricane prescription on the, you know, western part of the city. On the time you had the, we presented the final draft of the Norman War, which is a nice premium, very nice. And Alan really wants to make it official and have the opening, the official opening of the archive. It was on, but the board decided that we might as well wait now till spring to have a, for the public. But right now with the restrictions and the government, the next month. So Alan, everything's ready, everything's supervised, because we're presenting to everybody the nice work of, of, of.
Thank you. Our cultural heritage, Councilor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our community grant program is now open for meetings for twenty twenty two. So, you know, community groups are interested in funding the grant program. The obligation deadline is October thirty first, four P M. As I mentioned, community improvement plan, public consultation in the paper, today's paper. So we're looking for an informator's suggestions from the public on, after only one, one small change to that, that program. And with one small change came to the committee just yesterday regarding wrong taste carpets in town or whatever, and they're well on their way to a nice facade improvement on that building. So we'll be going to that very soon.
Thank you. County Council update, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. County Council on Monday, we had an allegation from the director of the House of Lazarus. They're an organization out of South Mass. And they did a very interesting and concerning proposals and report on the state affairs with regards to affordable housing across S D and G. And it's sort of dire, to say the least. We've got a situation where individuals and families across the counties are spending way more than the thirty percent of their income on housing. And so affordable housing has become very critical. And so there's talk of counties setting up a steering committee that will look further into this issue. I think we're also looking into it locally in the township as well. The, what's the bridge called?
The bridge on County Road.
Yeah, so the bridge, which was closed due to lack of railings. Ben and Mont said that that would be rectified.
They, they have not, still have not received the railings, but since they closed the bridge down completely, they've been able to get a sidewalk for people to work on. So that they're hopeful by the, and maybe even before that Thanksgiving to have a, to have a week of fun. So well before the Chinese.
Yeah, so that's, that's good news that that will be reopening. Let me see now, with regards to a forestry activity update. As, so there was an explanation of what went, what went on with regards to closing some trails in Mitchell Forest. And the, the director of transportation and did say it was a learning, a learning aspect of the counties that they need to really know exactly what kind of recreation is going on in all of the track, in all of the forests across S D and G to be able to work with those groups to make sure that the recreation activities are not affected by other activities that families decide to do. So, so that was the big report there. And that's it. Thank you.
Ben and Mont, as I mentioned, you do have, also one thing that was at the end of the expression of interest for next year's board, and I'm pleased that Deputy Mayor Williams to put her name forward, there will be an election next meeting. The person who put her name forward is Mayor Brian McGillis from South Stormont. So I wish Deputy Mayor Williams luck and go enjoy it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilor Massey. Okay, moving on to Friends of the Trails update, Councilor Winston.
So the Trails Committee is still working on installing memorial branches. We should see them hopefully in the next few weeks. There's a couple of events being planned for this year, a pumpkin event the second of October, and a Christmas event made to be determined to increase the visibility of the trails and enjoyment to users.
Thank you. Development meeting, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we continue working, we have a subcommittee that continues to work on the education file. The county's does have a draft forthcoming soon to County Council. And hopefully we'll move this issue forward. And the issue, of course, is educating kids in our communities, which theoretically will help support our local schools. We also have ongoing discussions with regards to our development and marketing plan associated with that on the I H project, as well as we continue discussing the Alexandria Goon Project. It's a priority to keep that moving forward. And our, what's Daryl's title? And our development and marketing coordinator, Daryl Cox, in a one-year position. He's been kept very busy because there's an enormous amount of interest in Alexandria in particular with regards to developments. He is working with property owners as well as connecting them with appropriate contacts for development. And he continues to work on marketing projects as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, yeah, go ahead, question? Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments on any of the standing committees? Seeing none, notice a motion next committee, the whole meeting is Wednesday, October twentieth at three P M. The, right here, and motion to adjourn. Councilor Massey.
I have myself seconded by Councilman Noble. They're being more conservative than I thought.
To discuss the meeting was at very late, four thirty three P M. Just like to thank all members of council for attending today and staff and members of the public. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.